Alderman from the 4th. Would you like to approach the dais? Resolution number 175. Alderman from the 18th. And family and friends of Alderman 6th, please join us here at the dais.
Mr. President, Members of the Board. We're here today to recognize and to say farewell to one of our own. But I just remind us that there are rhythms and seasons in life. You know, summer cools into fall, fall goes into winter, winter heats into spring, and spring quickens into summer. There are seasons in life. There are rhythms of living. And we're here now at one of those transitions from one rhythm and one season, from one time to the next. And it seems that the ending of one is in fact the beginning of another. And so then, in that regard, we can rejoice in the fact that one of our colleagues is going on to something we'd like to consider bigger and better. So how can it be bigger and better than sitting? Well, she's found a new place to transition into. And so today, we say farewell to her, but also congratulate her and welcome her into the new life that she's about to take on, that she can talk about herself. Resolution 175 recognizes the work and the accomplishments of our Alderman Casey Star Triplet. We call her Star. Whereas Alderman Casey Star Triplet will be resigning as Alderman of the 6th Ward, and whereas during the five-plus-year tenure, Alderman Triplet has worked tirelessly on behalf of the people that she represents. And whereas Alderman Triplet served as a member of the Convention, Tourism, Arts and Humanities, Ways and Means, Public Utilities, and Neighborhood Development Committees, she was also Vice Chair of the Health and Human Services and Engrossment Rules Resolutions and Credentials Committee. And whereas she has been featured in Oprah Winfrey's O magazine and also Ebony magazine as young leader under the age of 30, receiving her bachelor's degree from Hampton University, the other HU university, and her master's degree, I went to Howard University, that's the real HU, and her master's degree in International Relations from Webster University. Casey has traveled extensively and represented the United States on several international delegations throughout the continent of Asia. She is also the current host of the television show called Inspire St. Louis, which features young professionals making a difference in local community. Whereas she has held forums and workshops to help inform the city's homeless population and created a checkbox on tax bills known as "Hope for the Homeless." During her tenure as 6th, during her tenure, the 6th Ward has had first platinum lead-certified commercial buildings in the city and the first sustainable green alley. And whereas Alderman Triplet upheld and embraced the proud family tradition of public service set by her grandfather, John Bass. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Aldermen of the City of St. Louis that we pause in our deliberations to express our sincere appreciation to Alderman Casey Star Triplet for her many contributions to this board, the residents of the 6th Ward, and the entire city. And we further wish her success in all of her future endeavors, and we direct the clerk of this board to spread a copy of the resolution across the minutes of these proceedings and to prepare a commemorative copy to the end that it may be presented to our honoree. We're here today to present this to her for her fine work on behalf of the city and to congratulate her on moving on to bigger and better things.
There should have been a counteroffer from the City of St. Louis. The City of St. Louis is losing a jewel like the main diamond out of a wedding ring. It is amazing that we are losing such a progressive young lady who has done so much. And especially for me, I've been in that room with Casey for over six years. When I got there, I had papers stacked high on my desk, the old antiquated way, and she kept telling me, "You're gonna learn how to do this computer." Stubborn male chauvinist, didn't want to do it, but now I am Android man. Thank you so much, Casey Star Triplet. This is a young lady that I adore and have great feelings for. I wasn't gonna be here this morning just so I wouldn't have to do this, but I was forced out. And when I got to my office in my chair, she had Mickey Mouse sitting in my chair. So his name is now Samuel Mouse. But Casey, we are gonna miss you. I don't know who they're gonna put in that room with me. I heard it was smeared, but uh-uh. But we're gonna miss you. I'm looking for a window, but I appreciate you and I love you. And God bless you and all of her colleagues, not just the Black Caucus. Everyone out there should have something to say great about Casey. Casey is a jewel. We're gonna miss you dearly. And when she go to the White House, I'm telling you, and you'll be talking about me, I'll be leaving. I don't know if I have this type of ceremony, but when she go to the White House, I'm looking for Barack Obama to pull her at any time, and I'm gonna be her aide to Casey Star Triplet. All right, God bless you.
Anyone else before we move on to Casey? Casey, you're gonna have to wait a minute. This is gonna take a minute for you. Reverend?
To all of the Aldermanic Board and to all of you who assembled, the President, as pastor of the Mount Zion Baptist Church and as an active member in the 6th Ward, I am excited about whatever Casey does. We at Mount Zion call her, and I did hear Alderman Kennedy refer to it, we call her Casey the Star Triplet because she is a star in everything that she touches. We appreciate her spirit, we appreciate the hard work she gives. She is a committed person, and whatever she does, she goes into it with prayer, she goes into it with meditation and God's Word, and she gives her all. And so on behalf of the Mount Zion Church, where she is a member of our family, the members who are standing here with us at Mount Zion, we say to Casey, whatever God has in store for you, we know you're going to succeed. And so thank you for being a part of us.
Allison, Allison G., you know, I live in the 6th Ward, and this is one of our fearless leaders in the 6th Ward. She runs our ward organization, our president, Allison.
Hi. Actually, it was Casey that got me involved in the 6th Ward Democratic Organization to begin with, for which I thank her, I think. And we will truly, truly miss her leadership in the ward. We fortunately had the chance to at least say goodbye to her at our meeting last night, but she will be missed. She's a hard worker. We loved having her as our Alderman, and we're happy that she's moving on to other things and wish her great success.
Our former colleague, Alderman of the 5th Ward, April Ford Griffin, would you like to approach the dais? There you go. She's a good friend of Casey, and we miss you at the Board of Aldermen too.
This feels a little funny, standing back up here. Actually, I was wanting to say something, but I don't know. I'm starting to feel more emotional than the day when I left. I made it through that day and didn't even cry, and I'm over there trying to hold back some tears today. But I would just say, Alderman Moore, Casey was my roommate before she was your roommate. I allowed you to move into that room when I moved on to a bigger office. But when Casey first got elected, she came and shared the office with me, and we began to form a friendship as well. And I look at Casey as a little sister because oftentimes Casey would come to me for different advice, and we'd have a lot of conversations about politics and personal and just trying to find the balance and meet expectations. And Casey has always been very energetic and really taught me some things in terms of trying to increase your visibility in the community. Because if I could sit in an office and just work and get the job done and never have to be out there telling people what you're doing, that's what I would prefer to do. But there is a need to let the community know as a public servant what it is that you're doing every day. Because oftentimes, at the end of the day, they will not know, not understand, and act as if you come down here and do nothing. But we know that's not true. And so we both learned a lot from each other, and I have just seen her grow. And at times, she has now made me feel like I'm the little sister because she has matured on a spiritual level, and I have matured on a spiritual level. So oftentimes, I have gone to Casey on some spiritual advice. So then I become the little sister. And, you know, I wish Casey well. Oftentimes, it is hard to move on, but I do believe that there's a season for everything. Those of you who have been here for a while may have heard Alderman Kennedy give a speech where he goes into further extensive explanation of how there's a season for everything, and I love to hear him say it, so I won't try to do any of that. But I do believe there's a season for everything, and just as when I got ready to leave, a lot of people said, "Why are you doing it? You shouldn't do it," and people don't understand. There are some people saying that now in regards to Casey, but at the end of the day, you have to make the best decision for yourself and be true to yourself and make the best decision for yourself and your family. And there is a time for change. When you are truly trying to live a life of, within your purpose for being here, it does not allow you to stay in one position all the time. You have to move, you have to grow, you have to be able to help various groups of people, and sometimes that means you being in a different type of position. I think that Casey can affect a lot of people in a lot of areas in the position she's moving to. So I wish her well, and as I have told her, you have to be true to yourself, and when you are trying to fulfill a greater purpose, you must be obedient to the one that you regard as that higher being, and that is what she's doing. And so I know that she will be victorious in whatever she does, as long as she is being true to herself and her God and moving in the direction that she's being led. And so I wish her well. I am happy to have had the opportunity to work with her and serve with her here. I think we accomplished a lot of great things. We built a lot of bridges. We learned a lot from everyone down here. And so that made my time enjoyable. And so I just, I thank her for her sacrifice and years here, and I look forward to continuing to work with her in the community doing great work. And so thank you again, Casey.
Anyone else back here? The committee man of the 6th Ward?
Thanks. Casey, I just want to take this opportunity to say thank you for your service to the 6th Ward. You have truly done a fantastic job, and as your colleagues have already spoke, to your commitment and effort in the community, it certainly has been noticed and it certainly will be missed. And I want to take this time to also congratulate you as you move on. And that's all, because I can see this might take a while.
Be nice to be able to use the mic up here. I'm gonna say a couple words and then I'm gonna open it up. As the former Alderman of the 6th Ward, you know, I know what it's like trying to manage that ward and manage the very diverse population across that ward. You literally have, you know, almost every type of demographic you can think of, from the very wealthy to the most needy, from the, you know, old to young, you know, from every class of people, from African-American, Chinese, Bosnian, I mean, you name it, throughout that ward. It's a very diverse ward, and sometimes it's very difficult to manage, especially when you get into the downtown area, where you have to figure out how you're gonna manage the needs of the homeless population with the needs of the more affluent folks that have now moved into that district and what they would like to see happen throughout downtown. Now, one of the things that I was very proud of Casey is when she took over, she took that thing on headfirst. She went in and began to make sure that those populations throughout downtown worked together. And that wasn't easy to do. She took a lot of criticism up front, and she never backed down. She kept moving and made people work together down there. And I've seen her do that time and time and time again. That's why every time I talk to people about Casey, I said, "Don't let this move taste fool you." Because she's a beautiful lady, she's intelligent and everything, but she has incredible resolve, like you would not believe. And for that, we all need to stand and thank her mother, because as a father of four, I know what it's like, and I know that for her to have those values, those values had to come from somewhere, and that came from her mother. So let's stand and give her a round of applause and thank her for... Alderman Kennedy, you wanna, for the presentation of the... Yeah, wait a minute. You know what? Wait a minute, let's do this first. Alderman from the 12th.
Thank you, Mr. President, Members of the Board. I first came down here, I guess it's been 19 months. I met Casey, and I feel that Casey and I have bonded together well. We talked about a lot of things, politics and personal things. One thing Casey did tell me when I got here, she was wondering who that gentleman was that was gonna win that race down there that nobody thought they would. The good thing is, the one thing is, I noticed the pictures in her office, and I said, "Casey, that's John Bass." That picture, she said, "Do you know that's my grandfather?" I said, "No, I didn't, but let me tell you something. I've known your grandfather for a long time, and he was one heck of a man. I knew your father." So I mean, it's like a small world, and I feel like we're in Emerald City. I feel like the scarecrow. So I think our bond in 19 months feels like it's been longer than that, and we shared some special talks together. And I just want to say thank you, and I know that you'll do well. And you know, when your time comes for calling, you're doing the right thing. So good luck.
Alderman from the 2nd.
Thank you, Mr. President, Members of the Board. Casey, I wish you all the best. I met you one time at a neighborhood meeting before you became Alderman. You were running, and I was helping the president of the board run for his office. And when you came here, you know, I knew your father. I cut his hair, he was so proud of you. And I asked you once you got sworn in, "What did you want to do?" And I thought, "Oh, she's gonna be a congresswoman. She's gonna say she'll be president." She said, "I want to be a motivational speaker." I said, "Well, that's a new term for a politician." I said, "Well, we'll see how that works out." And we all have been known for the things that we do here. You know, I'm the animal Alderman, and we know Sam Moore is the brick Alderman, and we know that April was our mama bear. And you always were advocate for homeless and affordable housing, and you brought more to us about that knowledge. And the people that we see across the street, you would tweet about them, and I, you know, I just thought that was very commendable of you. So I wish you luck. You're doing your inspirational thing. You're speaking well, and I'm sure, I hope, to look forward to my inspiration. And good luck to you. I'm sure we'll see you again. I'm sure you'll be knocking on our doors about your issues that you'll be taking up newly, and I congratulate you.
Alderman from the 25th.
Thank you, Mr. President. Casey, I just, I am at a loss for words. You know, when we learned of the news last Friday, I really almost had a conniption fit. I was being a little bit selfish myself. I'm really, truly going to miss you. You know, being one of the new folks down here and one of the younger folks down here, and you having served a number of years before me getting down here, I've really looked up to you and looked to you for guidance over the years, and certainly, your friendship has been absolutely amazing as well, whether that was, you know, while we were out with young elected officials throughout the country or just in committee hearings or going to your mom's house, where, you know, I'm six foot two and I felt short. So there are truly big shoes to be filled in the 6th Ward, and I look forward to working with whomever that may be. But I can't say enough about your conviction and your passion for serving the people, which is something that all of us as public servants should have and should be doing on a daily basis. And you're taking it to the next level and really getting in there and being an advocate for those who need it most, which is just your calling. And I know that it is, and I'm so happy for you, and I congratulate you on this move. And I know that that friendship will still be there, and I still need my sleeping bag back, so Alderman Triplet was among a number of people that were out in the community last night advocating for the homeless and sleeping outside and just trying to, you know, bring awareness to the cause, as she always has. And I'm just, I'm gonna miss you tremendously, and I look forward to our friendship and working together over the years ahead as well. Thanks for all you do.
Alderman from the 26th.
Thank you, Mr. President, Members of the Board. We are gonna miss our little sister. She was really the sunshine of this board of Aldermen. She came in the room, she lit it up. And she's a hard-working woman, very passionate in what she did in the 6th Ward. I know she's really happy in her new endeavors. We're so glad that you go ahead and made the decision that, something that you're really passionate about doing. And, you know, in working with her mother, I guess several years ago in the courts, I can see the resemblance, just like President Reed said. She did an excellent job raising Casey. Casey is a very bright, young individual. She's very passionate. We're gonna miss you. We looking for you for advice when it did come, for the homeless and affordable housing and the things that you've done. So good luck in your endeavors. We appreciate you, and we will miss you. Thank you.
Alderman from the 23rd. First off, congratulations, Casey. I knew your dad, Big John, and we worked together, and he was an organizer with the unions. And if he were here, he would be just as proud of you today as he was the day you got elected. I remember how proud he was, and he got the unions behind you, and he was so proud the day that you got elected. I did not know you, but I knew your dad, and I knew how proud he was, and I just can tell you that he would be equally as proud of you today as he was then. Alderman from the 20th.
Mr. President, Members of the Board. Alderman, I am very happy for you. I remember your days when you were working with Representative Carnahan, of course, in the 3rd District. And of course, then I learned that you had this long family history going back to Senator Bass and all of that, which is a very storied history. Your work with the vacant buildings and all of that. Many of us go through this process of an examination of conscience from time to time. I had this sense of turmoil, which is not always bad, not personally, but I sort of had this sense of turmoil after your election. And I didn't exactly know what that was, and I've recognized at least for a little bit that there's this sense of peace, and I thought, "Well, what is really up with that?" And now I've discovered what it is. So kudos to you, doing what you like to do, love to do, moving on to another step with all the experience that you have gained here. I don't know if, we really should have like purple all over the chambers today because I don't know what happens to the purple dino dinosaur or whatever that was over there. Wish you very much luck. I know that we will continue to see you, and I know that you will use all of that experience that you have gained down here, and I appreciate the fact that you have gone through this process and come where you are. Thank you.
Alderman from the 20th.
Morning, Mr. President, Members of the Board.
Good morning.
Casey, when I first met you, well, I was probably working against you on election But you let that go by. But when you came down here, you opened up your desk drawer the first time I visited with you and said, "Look at these," and it was like some beat-up pair of tennis shoes or something. You said, "Well, I walked all over," and I mean, she just had so much energy. I walked all over, looked at them, thinking, "Man, those things have seen better days." But it was her shoes that she had walked her ward when she was running an election. So I was fairly impressed that she put that kind of effort into it. But the one thing is, and you look at her today, and she smiles, she has an infectious personality, that she really brought a lot of enthusiasm down here. I mean, I look to the right, you know, I've got a bunch of people with gray hair, you know, sitting to my right. I think it's no big deal, but that energy that you brought down here was important to me, and I think important to all of us. And I mean, I don't think that we can replace that energy. And I can, and I think back, because I was caught off-guard by your decision, that, you know, that you'd kind of lost that energy in the last three or four months. I didn't see the smile and the bounce in your step, but today I see it. So I know that you're making the right decision for yourself, and we appreciate you bringing that energy to the Board of Aldermen. Thank you.
Alderman from the 28th.
Thank you, Mr. President, Members of the Board. Casey, when you first came down here, you sat right next to me, and it was a great pleasure to get to visit with you a little bit back and forth like we do when we sit next to someone. And I appreciate your enthusiasm, and I appreciate your progressive views, and I appreciate the bills that you've helped me on from day one, such as the Clean Air Act. And I know your constituents appreciate what you've done for them over these many years. So I wish you all the best, and I know you're gonna do well, and I know you're gonna continue to make a difference with a big capital D. So thank you.
Alderman from the 19th.
Thank you, Mr. President, Members of the Board. Well, young lady, we've had our conversation already, so you know where I am with you. There is, there is, hold on now. There is a need for the Casey Star Triplet's of the world. I'm very proud that you didn't get caught up in this because there's a lot that needs to be done on behalf of the people in our city and our state and in our country, and you are one of those young people that I think can get some of those things resolved. Most people know that I am an avid supporter of young people being a part of making a difference. So not, you know, sitting down and let it happen to you, you're gonna go make it happen for somebody else. So good luck to you. I appreciate sharing boundaries with you, issues with you, and I'll always be around. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the Senate.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too have shared boundaries with Casey, and I'd like to say thank you for all the service you've provided to the neighborhoods with grace and with understanding. And I too was talking with Casey yesterday about her staying out last night, and she deeply feels for the people that she's serving. So I wish you the best. I'm sure you're gonna make a difference, as has already been mentioned here, and I'm sure we'll be hearing of you long after you've gone from here. Take care.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the 18th and the 4th, would you like to present the resolution?
Well, on behalf of this board, where is she? Come on over here now. On behalf of this Board of Aldermen, we are proud to present to you this resolution in honor of your fine work on behalf of the citizens of the City of St. Louis, in particular
When I got elected on March the 6th, 2007, after my campaign manager told me the news that I had been successful, I said, "To God be the glory." And today, I stand and say, "To God be the glory." I am so grateful for the relationships... I am so grateful for the relationships that I have forged with you. I'm grateful for my mother, my church family, the spiritual covering that has been provided by my pastor and First Lady. And I am grateful for the friendships and the things that I have learned from each and every one of you. I want to thank the people of the Sixth Ward who trusted me to service their voice as Alderwoman. I would like to also thank the Sixth Ward Democratic Organization. You've heard from some of them today, but they believed in me and there were some key individuals that made me look good. They worked behind the scenes and they believed in the ward and they believed in this city. And I am incredibly indebted to each and every one of you and I thank you from the bottom of my heart. Alderman Kennedy started off with their presentation of this resolution referring to the seasons. And there's a scripture in the book of Ecclesiastes which talks about there's a time and purpose for every season. When I first got here, you know, I anticipated being here for a long time. I had goals and ambitions for some things that I wanted to accomplish. But I will tell you that over the past year, God really began to speak to me and I learned to submit and say that it's not my will, but it's your will. And God has moved me from here to do some more things. And that's what it's all about, doing what He calls me to do. So I'm excited about endeavoring on my new position to help and work with the homeless in this community and those who are mentally ill. So I look forward to working with each and every one of you. I would like to thank each and every one of you for the words of encouragement that you have given me. I saw Alderman Antonio French here, but I'd want to give him a special recognition because he was so supportive of my career when I first started. When I told him about the idea of me running to replace President Reed, who was Alderman at the time, I met with Antonio and I said, you know, I'm thinking about doing this. And he was the one that said, go ahead and do it. And I needed to hear that at that time. And so I appreciate his friendship and the work that he poured into me along with many others. I also want to thank my predecessor, Louis Reed, for the great work that he did in the Sixth Ward and he made it easy for me to succeed him. And so I just appreciate all of you all. You all will be in my prayers. I love this city. It's been a pleasure. I am grateful for every opportunity that I have had to serve and to work alongside with you. So be blessed.
Now, Casey, we're giving this resolution because we had some debate about your favorite color. If you remember when Alderman from the 5th retired, we knew for sure, you look at her glasses or lipstick, we knew that that frame needed to be red. So my vote was purple. Some people said blue and different things of that nature. So, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna pass this on to you later after we have it professionally framed, but we need to know today, is it purple? Is it blue? Is it red? So we can, we can make sure that it comes out the way you want it to come out. Purple. There we go. It's purple. Let's give her a round of applause. Purple power. So this will be framed. It'll be in a double frame with a photograph, the resolution medal, that kind of thing, in a purple frame. You'll receive it in a week.